It's so new to...
Yeah, well, before we agreed that, unless they were in Dalton, Williamstown, I think we need to find out the details of their community use, because some of those, if I could pass generationally within a family, could lock them in from there. A long time.
And I think with the addition to the ARC in our county, that this is from, you know, different, the different cities. I was in Brankford a weekend or so ago and ran into some people and they had to get rooms in Brankford that came to visit the ARC. So it's something the community can benefit from, and I know Dry Ridge has several that are doing well as far as every...
Mayor, we had about two before the ARC building in 2016, but now almost a hundred, we may have right now, and they're staying. They're staying.
Well, that's a whole subject, but the hotel that was going to go over my case, is that?
I haven't heard any of them. They was anxious to leave that fast.
Yeah, but it was all going home and then...
Reach out to Hogan Murphy and see what the date is and that. Any more on Airbnb?
Mayor, if I may, and I'm just now taking some of these ordinances. And one of the topics of discussion, at least as a community, is regulatory nature, me trying to keep an eye on who's actually operating, resides temporarily in the city, or you try to raise revenue. And I think that's a discussion that we're having, supposed to be, right? The point is, is the knowns in the building at all times, or who the property owner is, or whether you're trying to figure out how, at an opportunity standpoint, benefit from it. Those are legitimate questions, because the people who do come stay in the community, do they shop in your restaurant, or do they eat in restaurants, or shop in your stores, or do they leave trash for hiding when they leave? Those are questions I think that we all need to consider. I looked at the Dry Ridge, it appears that it's annual fee, and the purpose of the fee is, of course, to have the property owners and people aware and tackled, but it's a very difficult ordinance to force, by virtue of the fact it's requiring the property owner to tell you exactly who's staying in the residence. That's a pretty interesting issue, because sometimes people don't want to be identified. And certainly you can imagine why. So how do you enforce something like that? And I know they would do it from a safety perspective, you want to know if you have a lot that shouldn't be in the community. For a lot of reasons, but the question is, where's the enforcement? So council, maybe, could give some correction to each other, to the mayor, as far as, what's the point? Is the point to raise money, or is it to make the community aware? And if so, how do you pull back, cheat? The opportunity presents itself, make a little bit of money to help do other things, like pay streets and do things for fun? Or are you simply doing it to identify who's walked into your community and not giving a helping? Because if you ask the point, and you're going to have to have somebody actually observe it, for these people...
I agree with Mr. Williams, of course, I would say my experience has been, the neighbors' homes are totally, we can't be back. We did Dry Ridge to certain extent, but I understand that it can't be a model of enforcement.
And they are subject to the transient rent tax, superstate, and this county as well.
But where does that revenue go?
To truth.
Not here, right, to local jurisdiction?
Not to City of Critten. The KRS dictates the transient rent tax comes back to the state, which is disperbed to the local tourism office, which is part of our office. But you're right, Dry Ridge has a place, like the county does, where you have to get the occupational license, and they're tracking it that way. But I was just saying, they are subject to the transient rent tax, which does help the city in the sense, when we market in the whole community. But yes, it could be, I mean, it would be a huge revenue source for you, but you're right, tracking them because you want to know who's here, or it's a revenue stream as well.
Are you aware of any jurisdictions from now, that will start on tax for purposes of abstain?
No.
To offset whatever expense the community banned or...
Like I said, the county, I know you have to have an occupational license, and then that automatically puts you on the radar for them to collect the transient rent tax front, and you can't do that.
When you say, when you say tracking who's from your city, how do we track people in Dalton's apartments, or any other apartment, as compared to what you're talking about tracking the people who come into this Airbnb? Maybe I'm just not...
As far as, I'll try to answer your question.
Your definition of tracking, what exactly are you saying on the Airbnb part? Tracking the person, we want to know who's coming into the city? How is that different than Mr. Dalton over here renting it to Joe Schmoe, and nobody's tracking him? Why are we tracking this guy?
Yeah, that's a great question. I mean, I've looked at, the word has to apply to the City of Williamstown, not sure, of course, when it was passed, but essentially it appears that it started originating in 1998, hospitals, and then the 2000s, talks about short-term vacation housing rentals, not to exceed 10 consecutive days. There's, that's virtually, that's probably violated all over the place, because you have people that are on month-to-month lease. So they're technically sneaking it. It's probably not that additional use has been approved or adjusted. So one of the things about technology, it's opened up the doors, is it's made people's homes, bedrooms, hotels, hotels. So with that, legislation needs to be in place, and everyone's trying to figure out how to, who are we doing this? Is it a tax, is it, are you really tracking people who understand who needs to be taxed, to pay tax, or revenue sharing? Or are you really going to save the community so you know who's responsible for leasing this space out, so there's a problem, and contact them? Those are issues that have to be vetted, and I'm looking at these ordinances, they're all different, y'all have strange implications. The City of Critten made a side, can you bail it? It's a great question, things can be litigated over and over. People say, you can't, tell me I can't rent out my group's house. People are...
Well, yeah, and you don't want the city, you know, to...
No one has a clue.
But I would definitely say we need to put a cap on how many, as, just kind of like, let the license, you can only have it... We don't want to get overflowed with 400 Airbnbs in the parks.
And whether that can be done constitutionally, is a great question. And I'm sure that other communities are grappling with it. The issue is, the council sets the pot, so Pete and I do our job based upon what you all tell us to do. If you say we have a concern about this, or we will look into it and figure out how we can legislate, if we can. If we can, certainly advise you, if you think it's against your best interest to do it. Not saying we can't still do it anyway, but these are issues, communities are, I got a call just the other day from someone, asking me if I knew, he's a good county commissioner, if I knew much about Airbnb. Well, Airbnbs, we've been on the county for years, they're just starting to figure out, they're losing tens of thousands, they're losing a hundred thousand dollars in revenue. That's really what it's about. And they're behind the eight ball. Well, you can imagine how many are Airbnb and being county, right? So we're all trying to figure out ways in which, I think, to talk intelligently about what's happening with your community. Is it safety, or is it revenue? And once you all decide on which one is more important, or maybe it's quite the two, then you can decide, given Pete and I advice of how to get it worked.
So Pete, I just don't see there's going to be a lot of revenue for the city, so I would like to see it more as boost to the local economy, bringing in tourists for the ARC. They're going to get Wendy's, they're going to shop at the Rego's, whatever. I don't, I just don't see it financially being that great of a deal. But I'm with the mayor on, we need to move on it, and, well, I don't want to do it wrong. I don't want to do it wrong.
Jamie, is there Airbnbs really in Critten?
Yes, they're staying, renting. We just, we put together a hotel-restaurant association out of our office, and we're meeting today, and several Airbnb property owners are there, and they said they're staying both every weekend and summer, middle of the fall.
Can you give some, and I just researched this issue for her case, but give some idea, there are people that are making four and five thousand dollars a month in their home. They're leaving their homes on weekends and leasing, and tickle families. And I can assure you, they're probably not paying the appropriate tax revenue they should in citywide purposes. Just, that's my suspicion.
And I agree with Alex, I think it's, there could be revenue streams, how great, I don't know. But I think it's also the regulatory, because you want to protect the neighbors, which is, was the issue in Dry Ridge, and they addressed it in a number of bedrooms. So I think there, I think it's a balance across the board of a lot of those things, you just have to decide what you all want with that. But yeah, the, Airbnb's are just, I mean, they're big and slushy, and we're even having trouble keeping track of all of them, because to boost themselves on social media, they'll play on their name a little bit, and they'll push their, boost higher, and then we're like, is that a new one? Is that one we already had? And so that's, we have to refer back to the county's records of, oh, these are the ones registered with them, and if they're not, then we have to go and say, we have to register. But you're right, communities everywhere are struggling with it, because people thought, you know, five years ago, people would be paying to stay in their homes.
In your bedroom next to you?
Yeah, in your bedroom, which is weird to me, but people...
Yeah, Mayor, you have a question.
I do, it kind of goes along with, you know, say I wanted to turn my house into an Airbnb. How are, if, say you all wanted to track, you know, who's going to be in our Airbnbs, how are you going to be able to do that without invading privacy? And then also you get into, you know, just throwing down there, say, you know, you don't like African Americans, but African American comes to stay in an Airbnb, but who's also handicapped? And then, you know, it can lead to like discrimination and stuff like that as well.
I think I can help answer, Dry Ridge, for example, which is, is really the way that they're going to enforce this ordinance, is they have the ability to go to court and have injunction issues. So if a person is renting out their home on a short-term basis, and revenue gap isn't licensed, isn't what they need to do, will simply file a motion to court saying, random injunction, prohibit this person from doing it, they do it, they get arrested. That's the way that they're going to enforce it. And it's a great way, of course, to be able to put some teeth behind it. As far as, can you discriminate based upon color of your skin, religion, of course not. And if you do it, then you run into some serious problems. I think the big key is, is people in residential neighborhoods around, or residences, are living next to a person who may rent the house next to them about 20 times a month. They're like, what is going on? And imagine, you don't know who that person is, we all know that you have to track people that have committed certain crimes. You know constantly, but who just moved in today? So those are the issues, I think, that, from a safety perspective. Now, don't get me wrong, jurisdictions have jumped on the revenue bandwagon, because it's, who is it, right?
Well, I think too, with Airbnbs, those are people that are not, they're transient in the sense they're coming in to stay short-term, but they're not people typically who are going to trash the house like some renters do, which is why you've seen a lot of rental properties convert to Airbnbs, because it's a cleaner industry, they're making more money at it, and people aren't coming in and tearing the copper wiring out when they leave and all that kind of stuff. These are people who are paying here because they want an experience. So it's a little bit different person.
To add, Airbnbs are essentially like hotel rooms, there's accountability, there's credit cards. So if we're going to the Airbnb like a hotel room, trash the place, steal something, that can be reported back to Airbnb. We take a portion of what you make as a renter through them, same with the RBO, and you can hold that person accountable through criminal, civil liability. So there's, like renters who instead of renting out on a month-to-month basis are switching over, it's because they want to hold people accountable for their actions, and it's more lucrative.
All of this, as well as pay, ordinance regarding... Next on the agenda is the cleaning of the office in the city building. We had talked about, JD has cleaned the city building roughly around 20 years, and approximately, I think around $75 a week, seventy, seventy-five dollars a week. And I did get some bids from four different agencies to clean the city building, that ranged from 65 to 125 a week. And of course, we can't vote, you know, vote on that tonight. We can discuss what council thinks we should do in that respect.
What is, what is the scope of, what are you doing?
Sweep, dust, bathrooms, kitchen area, dust the desk, room sweeper, clean rugs, the windows, basically.
I don't know why we just can't let JD continue to do it after 20 years. And, and give him the $75. It's better to know somebody who's going to clean it than bring a stranger in to clean it.
I agree, Paul. I agree.
Could his work schedule, one day a week, be altered, where it wasn't an overtime hour? Let's say it was, well, pick a day, maybe Monday or Friday, or something like that. Comes in two hours early before everybody else, but leaves two hours early, so it's still $40 a week, but he goes on straight time, that's probably...
So just, the people that put the bids in, I mean, they're all rentable, you know, things real, he was out of equipment typically. And, you know, you guys, what do you think? I did it myself, just... You guys think about it, decide on Tuesday.
If it's other than JD cleaning, won't somebody have to be in here with the woman? Or whoever cleans?
Well, they have to, they have to be bonded and insured, to make sure that...
Yeah.
It's a legit cleaning business, it's all four of them, they gave me their bids, and they are bonded and insured.
Yeah, but I think that's why Mayor, that's the point, put JD in here, because it was somebody that the city could trust.
For sure.
You know?
I don't have a problem with, with the people that put it in there, it's up to council what they think should be done. Either Boris files the, you know, I think he has done it for many years, and... Okay, we've had some, some questions next, regarding budget questions, and that's, that's part of that cleaning the office, you know, it's not, it's not in the budget. Cleaning the office. Also, we have an issue with extra hours for office staff, Megan has to be off work, or off her, she's sick, her children's sick, and Donna has to come in, you know, a day or so, or, you know, what do you guys want to do as far as vacation tax time, when we need to work here? If it's not in the budget right now, how do we, how do we fix that?
I thought that's what Donna was hired for originally, was to cover vacation tax time.
She, that's what, it's two days a week, she was here to, to help out Megan, and, but I mean, if Megan's gone, you know, we're walking five days. So how do we, how do we change that, or put that in the budget for that? It's not really overtime pay, it's just straight pay. I think that we have to put in the budget to, to take care of that, it's not here.
How's it different if it wasn't passed? I mean, if it wasn't always hard at this job, she filled in when Megan wasn't there. How's that different this year than last year? Plus the two days that were going to add on. We got the two-day coverage in there, so it seems like history is repeating itself, plus two days.
We only put, only money that was put in the budget was for her to work two days. There was no extra money put in there for her to, if I go on vacation...
But wasn't the pay, wasn't the person paid on, plus the two days?
No, I think it was just figured on her working two days a week.
Okay, how did we vote it for Donna, before it became the two days?
Before, I would add extra time in there, but with your all the budget, I don't think you all added that in there. I think you all only added two days a week in there for her.
Because I told you, she was going to work, and she was hired.
And I'd mentioned, when we were talking about that, there had to be time for tax time on my vacations, but there wasn't nobody suggesting that.
Side of that wall works. Is, on, I miss you, it was two days a week. But this week, do you need her more than you would next week?
I need her more than tax time.
Well, I understand that, but if, and it's going to sound, but if you were to start lowering now human bill for, like, if you don't need her now, don't use her now, that money will still be there in the budget to use December. Jay, are you waiting to hear her?
She's getting very worked on the website, we got the new laptops in, so she's got a...
She's going to do positions, Todd, really, because we just got our laptops in, and she's going to do all the ordinances, she's working for PR. Sometimes she works and doesn't get paid, as far as going out, picture taken, or, you know, for anybody, or things like that. But she's definitely not getting paid for it.
I know she spends more than two days a week in here, evidence. I look at my window, I'm looking at your window, so I know she's here more than two, and I appreciate everything. I guess I just need you to tell me, yes, we really need her for two days a week, fifty-two weeks a year? Or do we need her three weeks, or three days a week? And just get a feel for what you are absolutely happy with.
Now, in the previous years, I would say we wouldn't need her that much, but we need her now, or we never would, the change of what's going on with the city. And you have to take that into perspective, you know, you have all these ordinances, Megan has to work on, you know, things like that, she has to work on budget, and, you know. There's lots of things that go on as far as the complaints, you know, alone, people call in, you know, she, she makes copies, she, there's a lot, a lot of things to her position, you know, that helps Megan. And you've got to consider the change that's going on in the city. Not that, not that we're in 2018 anymore.
I understand tax time and vacation, sick time, that I understand.
But the code enforcement, we're getting more calls on that too, because they're saying, we need a message, we want this looked into.
And maybe when that budget was put together, we didn't look at it enough. But I'm not beyond Mayor, or voting for him, if it can be justified. Now, I think it can be, but I, I think...
I'm there again, so I'm not thinking, I know it can be justified, but I just know that the scope of work that's going on now, and plus what she's going to be doing with the PR, you know, she shouldn't do that, you know what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying, but I also don't think anybody on council knows exactly what all she does do. And that can be very complicated. If we could see it on paper, and, yeah, qualify her, yeah. Everything can be adjusted.
You guys think about that, and we'll vote on that next Tuesday. Also, I'd like to bring to the attention, the fire department floor, our, belongs to fire department in the city building. The city is responsible for upgrades and things of that nature. That floor has not been replaced for around 20 years. According to Ms. Megan, it's been here about that long, and, or that, or longer. And my request is that we get some bids to replace the pink carpet in the fire department building, and make that more respectful place for Dry Ridge, ambulance service, firefighters in our city. And I can bring those bids to the table next Tuesday and see what you think. One bid I received already from Big Bob's was 3,700, and then I can get another one, maybe from Carpetland, or someplace else, to give us a quote to replace that floor. My recommendation is, we should consider that, you know, for our hard-working firefighters in the mood of that building.
Are we talking carpet laminate?
More like the vinyl laminate, that is, that is resistible to water, to last a lot longer, looks a lot better and nicer to look.
Can I make a statement?
Go ahead.
I think your vinyl laminate will cost a little bit more to initially get it in, but when you look at carpet, you have to clean it clean, you know, if something happens to an area, you've got to get it fixed. So I think over the long term of the care of the carpet, of the carpet, it will offset the laminate cost. And if you get laminate that is kid-friendly, pet-friendly, water-resistant, it will last for a long time. And does JD also clean that?
No.
Okay, so who cleans that, the firefighters? So, I just think it would be easier to sweep a block, a floor, rather than shampoo a carpet.
Well, with traffic, no, nothing, no pun intended, but, you know, with men coming in and out, you know, you know, the, you know, the traffic, I think the lawn floor would be much better. In my opinion, you can pick what you want to, but they do have some that they showed to Big Bob's, and kind of got that close.
Well, I'm sure some of them, they come in very, you know, they might come in from a fire, shoes bloody, whatever.
It's easier to clean.
And that's going to, really, that carpet will not last that long.
Men will be in.
And women. And women, thank you.
Yeah, but they are, they do know we're off.
I do stand corrected, man, thank you.
Any new ordinance-related questions about the new ones that is passing for this Tuesday, the sex agreement?
Could you repress a memory?
We have the ABC administrative ordinance, also we have the copies and the procurement policy for the budget, and the stipulation for how much expenditure, $8,000. I don't have a problem with, you know, the budget, I think our city's in pretty good shape as far as, you know, we do have the floor that the council passed, Earlene and I had looked at the floor, and for that, and the money for the floor, and we agreed on the floor, the truck, everything's been passed, we got that, enforcement and travel, and that was passed. And as far as the copies, it's no problem there, you know, and... Is there any more questions, comments? As we move on, on our list, we had the letter of resignation for Ms. Paul Lowry, that's been withdrew. It never was read, so she still remains with us on council. She's been fighting some sickness, and she's going to hang it out, and we respect that, and thank you, Paul. Other info for tonight, comments, Mr. Robert, she made some... Other info for tonight, comments, Mr. Robert, chief events or concerns?
Yes. With the, with the reading of the budget, or the, the financials from last month, or beginning of this month, there was a salary check for EPC administration that I've got on this slate, slipped past here, we would have, I would have asked about them. And I've just got a couple of questions on how I take them out. I guess my, my first question would be, under what statute? I was under the understanding that the mayor's salary could not be altered during her term, which is her term. And I'm trying to figure out how that worked out, how that come to be.
It wasn't the salary of the mayor's salary. It wasn't part of the mayor's salary.
So that it would be a part of the EPC settlement? Okay? This is going to be, this, which series of questions? So then, if, I said, if you wanted to fire one, and you took her job, and then you fired JD, and you took his job, you could technically hypothetically make your salary for all those hats, whatever those totals be. I, I just...
There's no ordinance for EPC, there's no ordinance for code enforcement. And I would vote in there by council.
Correct.
I probably didn't, no code enforcement, but I was paying something. I think it wasn't, was it?
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, if code enforcement is not the most popular person in the city, I guarantee that. And I offered that job to you as one of them more.
And as a resident, I can bet that.
As a mayor. Did that work out for anyone?
Okay, so that first draw was $3,000 and then tax it out of that. Is that, do you intend to draw another or more by the end of the year?
The ordinance read $10,000 to $15,000 for the pay for the year. We're actually in the process of taking that away with the ordinance. I was advised to go to the middle ground since nobody can vote on...